Hope me one of my shots today. Yeah, another old guy, but we still have.
All right, well, go ahead and call to order the planning commission meeting Monday, June sixteen, twenty twenty five. Dennis here. Did Mark here. Beavers. Ritzdale, yes, sir. Is there any public to comment? To approve. Last meeting's minutes. All right. Order of business tonight is the kickoff with the master plan.
I can, I can start us off here. Hi folks, Mike Daly Martin from. Those of you that that only I know, I've worked with Tony a lot in the past and Dean, I have some new members of the planning commission here. We'll talk about the master plan, which has been quite a few years since it was last updated. Not sure Tony or Dean, were you guys involved the last update of master plan at all?
In the last one? Yeah. Well, I think so.
It did certainly has seventy five. Years, right? So every five years. So that but so every five years you're required to review and read adopt your your current master plan. You essentially have to say, you know. Are the goals and objectives is the is is the bulk of this material or is this still relevant or not? Master plan to your basis for for zoning, so. Leads into your zoning work, it's amendments. And you guys do a review every year, you know, that's actually something that M E D C asked you to do as being an R R C cert by community, so. You do your your review every year, the goals and objectives, it goes it goes into your annual reports. You guys are actually really on top of this stuff. But as far as a comprehensive update, you guys have not done a comprehensive update to that, to I believe two thousand eight. It's it's been a really long time since you guys done a full update of your master plan. Then these things like your demographic information. Is really, you know, we're 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 really looking at the two thousand census information at that point, right? With with some estimates, American Community Survey, your estimates. So when we go through and do our master plan update, you know, we're gonna be, we're gonna be looking at stuff like that. There's a lot of information that goes into master plans, that's why we give everyone binders, we're gonna give the handouts, and the idea is that. For each different task, you know, that lines up the meeting. And you're gonna have additional things to put in here for each of these tabs, so. For the meeting one, we've got some some materials coming tonight. We did put together a little agenda just to kind of through some different things that we want to cover, try and be as effective as possible about it. And we we want to start off with introductions, we've done that here. I Greg, I I know, I I you've been at council for quite a while, I don't I don't think that we really were.
Couple of years.
A couple of years, okay, gotcha, yeah, but I I can we go around the room and just kind of introduce others as well?
I'm new to the, my name's Jason, and I'm new to the council, great, um, this year, so, great, Greg, need to be on the commission, so.
Perfect, here we are.
I'm very new to the area, great, and just started a couple of months ago, and so. Very curiously, you have to say, because I was on another planning commission back in Ohio, and I never had a three ring binder presented to me in a meeting.
That's what grants will get you.
So, you know, and I and I think, you know, that's that's I'm glad you brought up the grant, so. The reason that the city is pursuing this full update is because Mishda was giving. Michigan Housing Development, Michigan State Housing Development Authority, so. They had grant funding that was available that did not require any match, so the city did not input in any. Any of their own money to update plans. Or zoning ordinances that related to housing, so. State understands that there's a lot of, a lot of local red tape that's involved. With with that's an inhibitor of new housing. So they said if you are going to look at your policies as a city, we'll give you grant funding to do that, so. It was pretty loose as far as what we have to do for that funding, we just have to evaluate. The cities, the cities' housing inventory essentially, so we're gonna look at, you know, things like. How many single family units are in the city? How many duplexes, multifamily? And, you know, what are some good recommendations that we can give? You know, for maybe trying to reduce that cost for renters, or, you know, maybe we find that. We have a lot of of existing housing stock out there, that's, you know, all different types. And then we're doing a pretty good job, you know, that'd be fine too, but we just have to look into it with this master plan. So you've been on a planning commission in Ohio, you know, the the law, the laws are a little bit different between Michigan and Ohio as far as planning are concerned, right? So Michigan is is regulated under the Michigan Planning Enabling Act. So when we do this update for the master plan, we're required to look at specific elements, right? So we have to do some form of public input. And you're gonna see in this documents today, you know, there's there's draft survey. And these are just ideas to kind of get you thinking, I know that they're certainly done pretty recently, but. That is that is part of it, so we we are proposing that we do two forms of public input. One would be an online survey, the other one would be a public hearing at the very end. Aside from housing, some other things that we're gonna look at. We're gonna look at our downtown a lot, right? You know, there's there's the economic development strategy that the city has. That was not incorporated into the last master plan. There was, you know, there's priority sites, so the city owns some property that they've been marketing and excellent working with. Michigan Economic Development Corporation, and trying to find developers for specific purposes. So our idea is that, hey, we have all these random little, not random, but we have all these documents that have been developed over the course of the last ten fifteen years. They don't really speak to this, this, this master plan, you know, the the current master plans don't really speak to that, so at a very base level. You know, our goal is to try and take these documents and try and cross reference them and make sure that. We have a consistent set of recommendations for for the city on. Goals and objectives, so. At its base level, you know, a master plan is a guide, right? You know, we're trying to set up, what's our vision for the future for the city, you know? Do we want to see development in certain areas? Do we not want to see certain types of development? You know, what type of housing, you know, is is appropriate for the city, you know, all these things kind of go into that, so. As I want to be talking right there, and. So, yeah, that kind of let, that kind of leads into number two for the introduction to the master planning process. Like I said, your your binders are split up with the the five different tabs. And those are supposed to correspond to the different components of the master plan that we're trying to talk about and break up in five meetings. Today would be. Your second page here is a schedule. This is a draft schedule and and how we expect to to go about this update. This is a worst case scenario, if we can get this done quicker than than May of next year, we absolutely will, but I'd like to. Be conservative about it, bring it to you quicker than the other way around. The third document that you have here is a master plan kickoff, this is just essentially. Kind of ran through a lot of the things that I just mentioned about what a master plan is. Now, it's that vision for your future, it is, it's the basis for zoning, so. If there are things, if we see that there are things within your zoning ordinance that should be changed based on, you know, public input that we get. Maybe some information that we get from, you know, Faith is gonna talk about some of the demographic demographic information that we pull from the census. You know, about. Maybe there's, what we really commonly sees that homeowners. You know. Not very cost burden when it comes to their their actual, their proportion of income that goes towards housing is pretty low. Typically, and I think a lot of that has to do with the fact that, you know, people were kind of able to.
Do you cover other counties?
As far as in in.
You cover other counties, what you're doing right here. Master plans for other counties.
Talk, talk about that more, you mean like I might go.
So personally.
Yeah, like like our company?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. All across the state. We do stuff in Ohio, we do stuff in Georgia. I thought you were referring to this specific plan.
No, no, so give me an example of what you just. Said. Like what things come up up in the public interest? Of our examples of what you might might want to change. Because this is new to me.
Okay.
What are some of the examples that you've changed in the past? In other counties?
So. Recommendations that we've given to to change in other counties could be to. A lot of, a lot of higher density housing, for example, I'm I'm thinking a lot about housing because that's what the grant was centered towards, right? But for housing purposes. A lot of times duplexes or multifamily units are things that have to come through as a special land use. But in certain instances. It makes sense that those would be able to be permitted. By right, so without having to get a public hearing. Now having to come through and get a bunch of feedback from all the neighbors. If you're, if you're in a in a inappropriate location, it would make sense for for that developer to be able to say, hey. I'm gonna do a duplex or a triplex or a quadplex, so up to four units on this parcel. And not have to get. Not have to go through the process of the public hearing, not have. Have to spend that extra that extra time cost to that, so that would be a basic.
Okay, perfect, good. Thank you.
Yep. So. Trying to think what I was talking about there.
You were saying that a lot of what you introduced with. Is in this page.
A lot of things that we see, you know, pretty frequently. Single, I I was talking about the housing again, the single family homes are predominantly what you see in a lot of communities throughout Michigan, just in general. And a lot of times there are, like I just mentioned, regulations in place for zoning that make it very difficult to do anything else than that. So, you know, maybe we're gonna, you know, there could be areas to lessen that, just to make it a little bit easier for other types of housing to be to be developed. There's a lot of times we're seeing that these renters are the ones that are really, you know, bear a lot of that burden as far as their proportion of income going towards housing, so.
We've done that here. Before, aside from the master plan, there was one a couple of years ago. Related to building height. There was. Something about driveways that. We changed in order to to cut some of the red tape out.
Okay, yeah, good.
Make it easier.
It's good, yeah.
Finding ourselves doing that a lot, we should just update, so do it here, so we're not having to. Have all these special cases.
Yes, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's the whole kind of push of the state and the lack of housing. Is to. Get your zoning and get your your. Plans all in order so that you don't have, you know, it doesn't take months and months for people to come in and build a house.
Right.
You know, do something different, you know, like the apartments or something like that, so. So big.
It is, and and I think. Was different than, you know, you folks as the planning commission would be the body to really work on zoning ordinance amendments, right? But start with you, and then it would go up to your legislative body, your city council for approval. And those spot amendments, those things that we worked on with the the driveway, the curb cuts, and. You know, those are pretty small changes that, you know, you have to do those things, they're they're. Their kind of continuing maintenance with a master plan really comes in handy is. You kind of get a chance to pull out a little bit and say, hey, you know, we have. We have this this zoning district that really functionally, you know. Doesn't make sense here, or maybe we need to add in some additional regulations for the downtown specifically, right? Make it a little bit easier for businesses to come in and cut through some of that red tape. You know, those are the types of recommendations you could make in a master plan, that are kind of larger zoning zoning changes. That would be maybe a little bit more difficult. To think through in a very like logical way. Without, you know, going through the process of asking the public what they want. And, you know, really kind of. It's just a more thoughtful process, so. Other question, any other questions about the master plan? Process in general? Or what it's for? One thing we have to do to start this out is we have to send out notices to surrounding jurisdictions, so. We have to send a notice to Chiwasi County, we also, you know, border Plin County, so we would send out a notice to Plin County. As well as Siota Township. This is part of the Planning Enabling Act. That we just have to notify surrounding jurisdictions that we are. Is called an intent to plan, so we're going, we're we're developing a master plan right now, and that, you know, if. Expect a draft, so we have, once we get that full draft done. We have to send it out to them again, and we and we would. What we have to, we have to notify them again and say, hey, we have a full draft, here's a copy of the draft, so. Part of the reason why this is proposed to take so long is that, once we have that full draft available, we have to make it available to them for sixty three days before it's adopted. So. That two month process is just is right in the state law. And it's, you you can't avoid it, most of the time, you're not gonna get feedback, but. The idea is that you're able to kind of collaborate a little bit more, right? If there's some type of. Initiative by the township, or, you know, the county that we're not thinking about in the master plan process. Is there opportunity to say, hey, consider this, and, you know, we recommend that you, you know, maybe make a change to this or that. Right, right, okay, there you go.
So you're gonna send out a notification to every landowner in Plin County, or just the. Planning commissions in each county?
Correct, so it actually usually goes to the clerk, because they're the ones that oversee those notices, no, we would not, we would not notice every landowner.
Okay.
That's, that's not, yeah.
Yes, no kidding. Like, holy crap, we're gonna notify everybody?
So, yeah, as far as, you know, notifying your residents about this, you know, there's, the only time we really have to 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 go and be very public about notifications to local. You know, property owners here is for the public hearing, so with that, it's a newspaper notification. Fifteen days in advance, so really, that's pretty minimal. You know, we encourage you guys, you know, if you know people, let them know, hey, we're working on the master plan. Specifically, when we talk about the survey, you know, that is where it's really a good opportunity to say, hey. This is what we're doing, you know, we're really just trying to come up with an idea of what you guys want to see in the future, looking on a long range. And we try and think ten to twenty years in the future, what do we want the city to look like? And the more input that we can get, the better. I've got a draft of the letters that we would send out. We'll take care of the notification process for you, make sure that we're following all the laws. I've got it written up as as coming from Kim. It's usually the clerk or the chairman of planning commission that this letter will come from. But we would make sure that, you know, it would be sent out from us. You know, you might get the notification, we might get it back if it's if it's an email, but. Really, this first one is just, if you want to, if they want a physical copy of the document, we ask for them to to actually put that back to us and say, hey, we want a hard copy, just. Time, material costs that goes into that, you know, we're gonna offer up the digital copy first, always, so. We also have to notice public utilities. Railroads, Verizon, you know, any. Places like that, they're they're spelled out in the act, we've got a list. And actually. Consumers Energy, Frontier, Verizon, AT and T, Spectrum, M dot D N R. Trying to think, as far as. Typical internet provider. They start, so let's say that was.
You could say wow, right? Wow, awesome.
No, it's wild up here. We'll have both of those two lists. Hey, so that's the intro to master plan update. What do we have to do to get it started? Just. Like I mentioned to you folks about, you know, that sixty three day process once we get the draft. We'll give you more details about that once we get a little bit further on, but. Any questions right now?
So the populations and stuff, and just get them all from those. Census.
Census, yeah, so take it from the from the twenty twenty census or American Community Survey. It's also, that's that's related to the census, they do, they do estimates, so. Based on the twenty twenty census, you know, this is what the city's, the city's population is anticipated to be right now. So that's the next portion that I want Faith to kind of talk through are some of the background demographic information.
Yeah, so, yep, next to your binders, we have the demographic data that needs to look to you guys. I'm just gonna briefly touch on some of the main highlights, I'm not gonna read everything, but. As you mentioned, population in twenty twenty three, it was one thousand six hundred and forty. The population in the city, I mean, we looked back to the sixties, has continually been rising. And then we also, with our demographics, we we compare it to the county as a whole and the state of Michigan, just so you can. Just so you guys can see kind of how we fit in with trends that the state is seeing and the county is seeing. So median age within the within the city is thirty years, this is significantly lower than the than the county and the state of Michigan. And then at the bottom of that first page, demographics. Is the breakdown in ages of all the residents in the city. And as you can see, based on just that median age being significantly lower, there's a lot of. Residents in the city who are under eighteen years of age, and then more specifically, under five years of age. And then there's also a spike in those thirty to thirty nine, so we're seeing a lot of young families based on, based on this data. To move on to the next page. About housing trends. Not surprisingly, the city has primarily single family detached housing, seventy eight point one percent. This is on par with the county and the state of Michigan's typically what we're seeing. The city does have. A higher percentage of. Rental units, specifically those between five and nine rental units and ten to nineteen rental units. So you guys do have a mix of some rental and apartment units in there, but primarily it is single family housing. And then continuing on. Of the housing in the city. About ninety five percent of that is occupied, so the city has a very low vacancy rate. In comparison to the county and the state of Michigan. And then. Again, about seventy percent is owner occupied, thirty percent is renter occupied. So you have a little bit more renter occupied housing than the county and the state of Michigan as well. Moving on to the page three. This is where we look at the breakdown of housing and when it was built. Within the city, we see a significant portion, almost forty percent was built between. Nineteen thirty nine or earlier, so we have a lot of housing in the city at ninety years. You're ninety years old, close to a hundred years of age. This is important because that tends to signify that, you know, that's when there's a lot more maintenance involved and just higher costs associated with that. And then, I mean, since two thousand, there's been a pretty low portion of housing in the city that's been built, new housing to kind of supplement that aging. Moving on to housing value, in twenty twenty three, the median house, median housing price in the city was just over two hundred thousand dollars. It has risen significantly since two thousand ten, but. In comparison to the state of Michigan, it's it's on average, it's it's following that trend. And then Mike was talking a little bit about, you know, owner costs and renter costs, and at the bottom of page three there, we have to break down between. The amount of. Monthly income that goes towards housing for owners versus renters, and we can see that. With owners approximately. Eighty three percent are spending less than thirty percent of their income on housing, that typically means they're not housing burdened, that housing is affordable for them. On the other hand, for renters, we have about sixty five percent that are spending more than thirty percent of their income on housing. Signifying that their housing is unaffordable. Continuing on to page four. We give a breakdown of. Income, so median household income, median family income and per capita income. Between the city, the county and state. The city of Langsberg has the highest median household income in comparison to the three you're comparing. On the other hand, median family and per capita income, it has, the city has the lowest. Which is interesting, and then. Moving on to poverty percentage. The city has a significantly higher poverty. Percentage than that of the county and the state of Michigan. And then commute time to work, the average or the median travel time. Twenty six point seven minutes. At the bottom of of the page, you see the larger breakdown of. The different times people are reported to travel to work. Based on this. We're estimating most people are commuting to Lansing, St. John's, or Alasol. For for employment. On page five, we look at employment by industry. So the three industries with the highest employment in the city are educational services and healthcare. Manufacturing. Retail trade and construction, this is very comparable to the county and the state of Michigan. And then the last, last item we're looking at is education, so we give the breakdown of. You know, who has received high school diplomas, who have, who has gone to some college but not received a degree. A degree, who has a associate's degree, a bachelor's degree and a graduate degree. And for the most part, the city. Follows the same trends as they all.
These are standard metrics, I'll tell you that the, you know, the high school, some college, no degree, associate's degree, bachelor's degree. These are all categories that the U S Census asks about, they actually do the survey, so. I I was brought up in a community movement recently, what about the trades, you know, trades are, you know, a pretty big component, becoming more. Popular, especially for young men. Census does not really ask about trades in the same way that it does, you know, your standard. You know, level of education for high school, college, or or not. So did want to point that out, and as far as the industries are concerned, same same kind of deal, right? You know, they add, these are, these are standard. You know, industry categories that are surveyed by the U S Census. This is the starting place. Then we go on to to have a little bit of summary on each of these. I'm just curious if. Anything kind of jumps out at anyone as being. Feeling interest, you know, being interesting, you know, not necessarily what they thought. Or does this feel, you know, pretty in line with what you you had expected for for the city?
It's like the poverty percentage. You've got people. Right, so.
Yeah, I mean, if, to some extent, there's like so much that. Locals can do, those types of things, right? And you're not out here actually developing. Rental permits, you're not out here to establish. You know, I mean, some communities out east will do like, you know. Such that I say, you know, the rent rent control, right? You know, I mean, that's that's not, it's not typical for the state of Michigan, it's definitely not typical for a city of this size, so. I think it's good to be aware of that, you know, especially when we think about, you know, especially when we think about their goals and objectives. And, you know, let's think about what the role of the city is, what we want the role of the city to be. And we can certainly give some recommendations of things to. Maybe make it a little bit easier to 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 develop more homes that that are for rentals. Maybe think about. Um, maybe think about, uh, you know, what are we doing to, to bring, you know, industry to the city, right, you know, is there something that can be done? You know, this, and also thinking, I mean, the city of Langsberg is not, you know, really, you know, full of industry either, right? Maybe have a, there's a downtown and there are some, there are some, you know, there's some industry, but it's not, uh.
I didn't see a industrial section of Langsberg, is there, there isn't, okay, okay.
That's pretty common, and that's probably not going to change overnight, right?
I guess I was kind of, the age of the housing, I'm thinking about the subdivisions at Bates, subdivisions of Doyle. Subdivision of Woodbury. Those are all built after two thousand.
After two thousand.
I just, I guess I thought that would have weighed into the percentage a lot higher.
Yeah, that's, uh, oh, that's, that's a good thing to bring up, and, and I think. Yeah, and, and you can see that, you know, there certainly was, you know, we have nine percent of, uh, of the, of the housing stock is being built between two thousand, two thousand nine. And then we have an additional twelve percent between two thousand ten to twenty nineteen, so there definitely was some, some activity going on there, but. By and large, the housing stock throughout the city is, is quite old. I guess if you think about it from, you know. All of the houses out there, how many were actually built, you know, before that nineteen thirty nine mark? And I find it pretty interesting too, we've been seeing this a lot, is that those houses built from twenty twenty on, you know, there's. We don't have a ton of data on that, right, you know, this is, the census was done in twenty twenty, um, you know, there. Those estimates are not going to be that great, but, you know, that's something too, where the city does, you know, they do their own building permits. You could, you can pull that data, you could certainly pull that data to see, yeah.
Is there a large section, section eight housing here?
I don't believe there's any, is there pretty much any section eight houses?
Sometimes you wonder, I'm looking at that.
That, that's a good point too, because that's one of the things that came up on the last survey, right, and people have a big concern about light, and a lot of the light houses that I see appear to be in that. Older, because there's so much maintenance on those. They're the ones that aren't getting maintained, probably because.
It's cost, yeah, yeah, it's a significant cost and effort to do it.
That's not a concern of ours, since we don't have it.
Well, we have, there's some houses that have, that are blight, but they don't have section eight.
Okay, there's not like. Blocks of apartments somewhere, I haven't seen yet that's section eight, okay, okay.
Section eight, it would have to be maintained.
Well, and I think at one time, the apartments across from the school were. Low income based on your income, but it wasn't section eight, but I don't believe it is anymore. I don't think it's.
What is it, if we did, this is, this is all new, I mean, if we did have a, a block of apartments that were section eight, would you help with that, with this plan?
Certainly could, I mean, get, think about, so the intent of this plan is really to identify, you know, what are. What are opportunities are, what are we going to focus on moving forward? And if we say, if we find that, you know, maybe that we should try and, and make that happen. That would be a recommendation to come out of this plan, we were not necessarily going to work on every single thing that we find an issue here. Think about this as a checklist for the next ten to twenty years of things to do for the city.
It's actually surprised that the percentage. Multi-family units.
Yeah, I was too, actually.
Higher than I expected. Almost ten percent for five to nine units and four and a half percent.
I know, that, that seemed to be really high. Yeah, I mean, I, I really expected this to be more in line with the Chi-Wissey County numbers, I feel like it was much more. Much closer to the average for the state. Which for this, I mean, you. It is a city, right, I mean, this is where if there's going to be multi-family units, it's probably going to be here. Versus, you know, out in the, out of the country, hilarious, so. No, I agree with you. Uh, so, I'd like to give you this, this is kind of a snapshot, and, you know, we, we really did a very quick summary of this, definitely take a look at it and read it a little bit more. Where we find this comes to be really a benefit, if we do our, our goals and objectives, um, which comes after we get public input. So, uh, that kind of leads into our next thing, which is the draft survey. This is just a, I say draft, and this is just a rough draft, these are some common questions that we have used for. Um, communities of this size. That would cover, you know, a range of topics. Uh, so we want to ask about things, some basic demographic information about the person who's taking the survey, right, how old are you, where do you live? Um, and I, and I could tell you from when we run this on, online survey, you know. We don't limit people from taking the survey that don't live in the city, right, so if there's somebody that maybe comes into the city or. You know, oh, I come in to, you know, to the farmer's market, or I like to come in and I leave my hair done here, and we want to be able to get that, their feedback as well. The software we use is called Alkmer, and we can identify, you know, where they're taking the survey from, so, um, if we have a question about, you know, oh. We, we'll ask that question about where they live, but then we can kind of go it further and say, hey, you know, does that kind of line up with the responses we get? Typically, yes, but we can always kind of, we can evaluate that a little bit more once we get our feedback. Number three, I, I don't know if you need to necessarily ask this question. We just did a, uh, we're doing a, a master plan for Ovid right now, they did want to keep this in here. Um, so I put it out to hear in your drafts, just to consider, I mean. We know that a lot of folks do not return to the city that they come from, but it was a question that they wanted to, to ask about, so. They've been considering it, um. And then we kind of get any questions about, uh, you know. What, why you like, uh, why, why you live in the city of Langsberg, uh, these are always, these are always interesting, I feel like this kind of gets to the root of, you know. What, what is, what makes the city, you know, special, what's, why are people really liking this town? Asking about the general quality of life. And then, we ask about that specific, specific things about the city, road commission, uh, road conditions, traffic. Um, you know, access to natural resources, blight. Quality of city services, uh, police, fire. Um, just overall quality of life, schools. Access to, uh, commercial businesses, job opportunities, um. And then if you, uh, so this is, uh, this is kind of a rank, a rank choice question, so you can, you can list it here and say, you know. You know, if, if you are, if you're selecting worse or much worse for any of these questions, we're going to ask you why, and we want, we want that feedback. Respondents are not required to answer any of these questions, that's kind of how we set it up, because. We don't want people to, to get hit with something and say, hey, you know, I, I don't want to answer, get more feedback, so I'm done. Big concern we have is survey fatigue, everybody gets surveys all the time now, so. How do we key, how do we hit on the key elements and get people to take the whole thing? And not make them be taking it for a very long period of time.
So, one, a little bit of feedback for me is, in number two, I live in Victor Township. The number five doesn't apply to me, so it should be a not applicable line on that.
That's fair.
Just throwing it, throwing it at you.
So you live in Victor Township?
Yeah.
Okay, great, so you could select Victor, you could select Victor Township.
Correct, and number two.
But that's what I mean, you, you would have the option to select live in the city of Langsberg, say, or the township, Victor Township or other.
Right. But then I, number five doesn't apply to me.
Um, yeah, so, okay, no, I see what you mean, I, I see what you mean there, yeah, yeah. Yeah, good point, good point.
We can always change the wording, number five to say, why do you live or visit city Langsberg? I think it still gets, gets to the intent of what that question is trying to ask, but it doesn't kind of, as you just pointed out. Doesn't play like a.
Always you're opting to take the survey knowing it's for the city of Langsberg, even though you don't live in the city. So you obviously have some built in concern.
On number eight. Just seems like sometimes there's so much, there's so many options, like, what do you think about reducing it to just, or same or better? We could, that way you're just getting.
Sure. You're getting a trend.
Yeah.
It's one or the other.
It sounds.
It's a good idea.
I'm just, yeah, you're right. The last survey we did, with so many write-ins, it was hard to fight.
Yeah.
Yeah. I get that, and we're going to try and limit those write-ins to two, three questions at a pulse, all right, our ideal, we want to get around to ten questions. That would be perfect, we have, you know, up to fifteen, say no more than fifteen for this. Really, we want to be able to go through and, uh. So as far as the write-in answers are concerned, we've got fourteen, what you like best about the city of Langsberg, fifteen, what is one thing you do to improve the city of Langsberg over the next five percent years? So those would be the only ones where they could actually type in like a full response to that. Unless they had, uh, unless they selected to do that on, uh, you know, on some of these multiple choice questions. You're not going to find that you're going to get a ton of those, most, most people will just select an option that you have there. I like that recommendation though, uh, eliminating much better, much worse, we can do that.
Yeah.
Yeah, our idea, and our idea here is to give you some things to think about, I don't, we don't need to, to land the ship on this today, we're just giving you all this information today, so. And we want you to be able to take this home and it may become, provide some feedback, maybe by next month. So that we can try and launch the survey. Maybe some time in, uh, you know, the end of, end of July, early August. Do you, I mean, you could see, and we're trying to hit on things like community services, ask about some housing, ask about things, you know, related to, uh, commercial opportunities, what kind of. Kind of, uh, businesses do you feel like you would want to see in the city? Ask about our downtown, uh, and ask about recreation. The kind of, uh. Points of emphasis there.
Seems like a lot of those were covered on the survey, just did. When you, that would spend the year.
It's last fall.
Yeah. Might be able to look at that.
I would like to look at that, I know that, yeah, we were, yeah, we would like to get a copy of that whenever you get a chance, so that we can. Maybe try and eliminate some of that cross. There's a lot of same stuff, okay. So maybe we could be a little bit more fitted towards things we didn't ask about last year. We could do that. You have any responses you guys got last year?
Not sure if I've been how many.
It's pretty good.
Yeah, it was a pretty, pretty good, it was just, there was a lot of questions and. There was no. Purpose to the, not, don't want to say it was a purpose, but there was, yeah, there was no, like, this is why we're doing this survey, you know, it was just kind of a. Out there and then we had, we had a lot of responses.
It's like six percent of the population responded something at range.
Yeah, it, yeah.
So the purpose of it was that. We've been coming to the planning commission meetings. Not talking about a whole lot because there wasn't a whole lot to talk about, so. We wanted to put a survey together to see if there was anything. That the public wanted us to talk about, right, that we could put on the agenda, so we could have something to do.
It was just because of the answers we received back, because there were just so many that were, you could put in whatever. We didn't get a real good sense of what the majority wanted, you know, it was like everyone was all, you know, all in place.
I mean, and ours, I think the other thing was that our original goal was to get it out, like, midsummer.
Yes.
And it didn't go out until.
No, it, it took a long time.
I don't think, yeah, we didn't, I don't think we caught the move, right?
Yeah, no, no.
I mean, there were some themes you could pull on.
Certainly, I really want to review those responses, because I think, you know, maybe this is an opportunity to not. Ask general questions, get more specific about things you guys really kind of care about, that's really the point of, of. This kickoff meeting too, is to say, hey, you know, what do you guys find, what is something you really want to focus on, what do you think is an issue? That we could maybe try to address with this master plan, um, you know, for example. This is, uh, this is a township level, it's a little bit different to the city, but. There is, there's pressure, uh, in a community we're working with to develop a data center there, right, so a big processing center for. These AI companies, and they, there's. Landowners that are being approached for leases, and a lot of the community is not know about it yet, and that community does not have any rules on how to, how to handle data sets yet. Right, so, their, their, uh, elected officials. Want, we're, we're just wanting to push forward with an ordinance amendment, but my question to them was. Does your, your community even know what a data center is, are they familiar with what? Happens in, in the community if a data center is to go in, that's an opportunity to talk about it in the master plan, so we're gonna, we're gonna, we're updating the master plan. We're gonna do survey, we're gonna ask questions specifically about data centers, how people feel about it, so that we know how to write that or answer a little bit better, so. Just want to give that as an example, so if you got, I mean, I don't know, are there things you, you feeling like. You're concerned about right now, that you feel like there's kind of missed opportunities in the city?
Got a vacant dollar store across from the dollar store on business, an empty grocery store, a ball, then three hundred feet of, of it.
Right.
That probably shouldn't be throughout.
Big deal, yeah. We did say it's hard to go in this. When, when was it, pre-recent?
It's March thirty of this year.
Pretty big deal, that's, uh, you know, it's right at. Right as you're entering the city too, I mean, that's from your major, you know, if you got your highway traffic, this is one of the first things you're going to see coming in, so.
There's no industrial park around here, and there's, no, really?
I think, I think part of that too is, is, is the facilities, right, the public water.
Yeah, we don't have the water, we don't have the. Structure to handle an industrial.
Right, I don't think we have the land for.
All that together now, yeah, we don't, okay.
Well, if you go right around the city limits and. There's just not a lot of area to not develop to.
That's where. For years, I mean, the discussion has been that our best opportunity. To grow the city is with additional housing. Mainly due to the available. Land.
I think over the years, people didn't want business area down, they wanted to anywhere but to be, you know. People always thought that they'd grad lions and work.
And that's why there is in that, in that drive time statistic. That's why there are so many people that travel, have all the way, work. I mean, that's, that's a big part of the reason why I moved, I think I might. Out here, I want to, I can go to work and have it be busy all the time, that's fine, but I want to be able to come home and. Relax and not have the noise of. An actual city, right?
But that, I think that's what you're after, then, we need to craft these plans for downtown, is that, it's not. What it is currently. Veterans halls and bacon for. Been logged twenty years, I've worked here, so.
I'm a man. It's, we're slowly getting, getting there with businesses, I mean. Five years ago, even if you look. You know, businesses are slowly coming back, it's kind of a ghost town.
And it brings, and it.
And it brings, and it brings a. Background to. The focus on additional housing. Cause there has to be. People here to spend the money, you have those.
Business disasters.
Yep.
It's just why, it'd almost be nice to enter people. You know, like, what, what was the reason? Cause the populations increased. So we have more people than we did ten years ago, right? We have less business.
Well, and I think that, you know, I mean, just from. When growing up, I've been here my whole life, so. You know, Dean, you probably know too, it used to be just the family stayed here. Like you had family after family, generations after generation. And, you know, I don't know if it was, those are our generations that left. And then. Now everybody, there's so many people from outside of Langsberg that never has anything attached to Langsberg outcome, and that happened kind of. After. Well, I like my daughter, who's thirty, like she went to school with, you know, still a handful of people we knew, but there was so many more outside. Coming to Langsberg, so Langsberg became the town everybody wanted to move out to. Where before it was generations of the same family state. It's, that's changed significantly.
Yeah, I could really honestly say that over a big percent of my graduate, graduate class in nineteen eighty stayed like.
Yeah. And then just, you know, and I graduated eighty-five and yeah, it just gradually, you know. They, they moved out and then, which opened it up for other people. You know, and, and I think that's the outskirts of Langsberg also, you know, I mean. There were. When I, I lived at, like Victoria and there was, you know, housing there, it's crazy compared to what I grew up out there. So, yeah, I just, you know, scenic lake, same thing, you know, people. I, I'm sure the majority of scenic lake are not originally or have family originally. Lived in Langsberg. So. I think, I think it changed over the last thirty years. Which, you know, of the housing and the, and the people, I mean, you know, I think outside of the city is dropped huge. But, you know, city. The subdivisions that I think helped with the. Population, the insights and things.
I guess my fear with, with the master plan, is there. What are our limitations? So, I mean, we can give people deals on. Cut the red tape to your business here, but if you can't promote people to support them. You need cash flow. Yeah, no cash flow, you have people walking through the door, doesn't matter how good the deal is, I mean. Yeah, so. Yeah, good point, and, and I do think too, you know, that's the big reason why the city has engaged so much state on, uh, you know. Doing the RRC program, I mean, they, you know. Were able to, to really work with, um. They're, they're in touch with a lot of developers, right, and they understand that. The city has this set of, of rules that are, you know, encouraging businesses or, you know, developers come in for certain purposes. You know, and. I think that we can, we can go a little bit further even and say, hey, where, where are other, you know, opportunities out there to? You know, are there other policies that need to be changed, right? Are there, are there other funding opportunities that? We're not seeing that, uh, you know, we, we could be taking advantage of. You know, I, I know the, like, the facade grant, right, that a couple of businesses downtown have taken advantage of. And there's, there's some.
You know, we've gotten it every year since I've been here. So, I mean, that's huge, and that's mainly because we're the only RRC certified city in Chicago. So. I mean, I don't know why.
A lot of why it leads to you guys. Jobs, get the grants, get certificates, the people that work in this office.
Yeah, it's, it's a lot of work, RRC is a lot of work.
Is there something we can do on the master plan to encourage engagement of those businesses?
Well, I gotta think, example, so DMV hair cutting salon right across from toolers, I get my haircut. He's looking for a grant to make her place nicer. Is it something that could be thought about in the master plan to? Well, she. Help her out, Dawn?
She's, um, applied for the match on me.
Okay, what does the match on me mean to me?
That it's a twenty-five thousand dollar grant.
Okay, okay.
And we can only apply for that because we are RRC certified.
Okay, gotcha.
Well, she, hers, herself and, um, PDPs both have applied for that grant for this year. So we're just waiting on the.
To answer your question, yes, those are things that we would talk about in the master plan, this is an opportunity, you know, from people that are business owners. You can do that, you know, we, so we would come up with a list of different potential funding sources for.
More like that, oh. This is kind of a crazy outside the box thought. If we had a list of grants. Kim, you can chime in. Would that be something that we put in the master plan that will find grants, will have? Either a. Skype or whatever internet or have a meeting here. For any local businesses, brick and mortar. Or out of the house to come in, they can learn about these grants, cause I think that's one of the things that we're lacking is the. Nation for those businesses know that they're out there.
Right.
Um, is that something that we put into the master plan, like every like two months, we have. You know, and for more in, informative meeting where. We would come in and explain the grants to the people.
I think it's a great idea, and I think that communities use master plans differently depending on who you are. Some places do it specifically because they know they have to look at it every five years and then it sits on a shelf, you know, I feel like you guys use your master plan pretty regularly. One thing that we're gonna do for you is, is give you an action plan, so. Gonna cut, if that's the goal, right, is we wanna make. Business owners aware of the grant opportunities that are available to them. And your action item from that could be. Uh, regularly, uh, set up meetings to, uh, with the public to, to, and, uh. To educate them on the opportunities available. So we'll come up with, uh, with a list of, of grants and funding opportunities as part of this process for sure. There's always, that is always changing, just know it's always changing. But, you know, you could then, you know, you know it's in, it's in your plan. And, you know, it, it just encourages you to do that for free, right? If you're looking at it every year, like you have to. See it in there, hey, we said we were gonna do this, we said we were gonna regularly off, you know, try off these opportunities. It's just, it pushes you a little bit more into that.
Yeah, I mean, the match on me is one of the few that we know are gonna have every year, I mean, now it's every year, it's twice a year. So. You know, it's something, you know, we know is gonna be there, a lot of the grants are like. You never know when they're gonna come and, you know, we're just always kinda looking for grants. But, you know, like the match on me, you know, we, that's what we do, we, we do have meetings, we send out a letter to every business owner. You know, then we, this year we had a meeting with, uh. Cause they kind of changed some stuff, so we did have. Um, a meeting with every business that wanted to buy for it. Um, so, yeah, I mean, that's, it's, it's great with the match, I mean, cause we know what's gonna happen, and we know it's gonna be there. Other grants, you know, you could just put in, you know, like when a brand comes up, we're like, oh, this could help. Businesses, we send out a letter to everybody, how we get that grants and see who's. Who's interested, some of the grants are, are business. You know, grants, and they actually have to apply, they don't have to apply through us. So they, they can go on and shouldn't apply themselves, but a lot of businesses just don't know about that.
Yeah, we just kind of fell under one, we got through the state of Michigan, then. Remember what they do, thirty-seven people across the state. Had about fifteen hours of paperwork.
Oh, yeah, 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 you guys have the match on me. And that's great, it's easy now, cause we've done so. Now I'm like, oh, I know all the questions, I can answer them all. But you guys have to do your whole part, and then we have to do the same thing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I think it's a great idea. So as far as the survey is concerned, understanding that we just did a survey last year. It seems like we may be better for us to go look at that, give you a revised draft.
And I'll send everyone the results again. Uh, of the survey, so then next time you, we come back. You can look over these questions and what we did before, and then you can mount, you should have them. Before you, so you know. What you're looking at and on the survey questions that you'd like to. Ethan.
That's, that's perfect, yeah, and, and we can, we can give you that draft. Two weeks in advance of your next meeting, so that you've got some time to really kind of think through it. Then maybe when you get here, you know, you could, you could kind of. Figure out what you want to keep and what you don't.
Communication wise, would it be appropriate if we gave? Kim our input and she gave it to you before the meeting, that way we're kind of.
I think it's a great idea, yeah, I, I think that's, uh, that's, that would be preferred, um. And it also just kind of helps keep everything together, you know, if you all are kind of giving Kim some feedback. She can give me a list of things that, uh, that, you know, were discussed. We can make the changes and that, you know, make it a little bit more productive. Something?
Sounds great, I agree.
Perfect. Um, to further schedule, um. Thing that we had, uh, so we, we, we've got five meetings throughout the course of this process that are slotted. To come back in front of you and meet with you, so we're not actually, uh. Right now intending to come back in front of you until October. Um, but just under, you know, we will be working on this behind the scenes. We'll get you the updated survey questions that you guys can read for next month. And just kind of talk through that yourselves, I mean. You, I think hopefully everybody has a good understanding of what we're trying to accomplish with the survey, right? We're trying to just get a, get a feel for. You know, really, you know, what are the things that, that we care about, you know, as a business owner, as a resident, somebody that, that comes into the city? Um, and get on those things that are not in last survey. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for putting all this together and. Getting us started off with it. Putting down the book.
So, while I'm like here still, um, I didn't put the property maintenance on here. So, I gave, yeah, I gave you all the, the, the one that we, well, the original one and. And Mike, of course, was here and remembers. All too well. All of that work and then. So, um. I didn't know if you guys had ideas or, you know, wanted to. You wanted to email me then, so that we can start that process with the. Property maintenance and reviewing and adding stuff, um. If you have. Any ideas or wanted to change or bring back some of the things that was in that original one.
I read it over and I have no changes.
From the first one and.
When you just sent me.
That was the original one. That we took itself out of. That's not our property maintenance. That was the. You like everything in there? Was there anybody that?
I have not. My, I, I just got done with my business season, so I will be able to.
Yeah, and that's fine, it's not, you know, in a rush, I guess. I think it's some, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, I mean, you guys all. The people that were here voted on that, that was what you approved me to begin with, so. Um, and now would be the time if you wanted to even add something else into it or. You know, meaning, cause we don't wanna have to do this again, cause it does cost money too.
I can tell you from the meeting I watched, everything was cut to go back and. I have no issues building. What I wanted to review was. The earlier traps and see if there aren't any decent, I don't know.
Well, there's the one that was an example that Mike had, and that was pretty extensive. And, yeah, and, and I think, you know, everyone agreed, okay, this is a little too, too much. But there were things in there that. You know, we could address again and look it over again and see if there was something we feel like needs to go, needs to kind of be added in there.
Happy to give you guys that original draft too, you know, if you want the, the, the full. You know, uh. Cause we got, this, this is from, uh. Oh, man, trying to remember I E C, you know, see, it's the, it's the same, it's the same folks that developed the, uh, the, the building code, the, uh. Your standard building code, this is where that came, so. Um, a lot of jurisdictions just adopt that. As is, sort of, the modifications, that's what you guys did, it's the modified version, so I can get you the full version, I guess, what I'm saying. It's meant for a large city, you know, it's meant for large jurisdictions, so.
Cause I would say the new city council. Would probably put a lot of that stuff back in. Okay, I mean, we, we changed over a lot of people in city council. And the. Persona is dramatically different.
Is it?
Yes.
Well, and I think we've seen something that happened that. That's happening now, they took it out.
There, there were some people that, you know, they tried to control a lot of stuff and. I don't see that. On council now. Maybe that's different leadership for the council, I'm not sure, same thing.
I think.
I, I think that.
Forward on the weekend and there's changes, there'd be both, it changes individually and not a package.
Yes.
And then we asked if anyone has a personal conflict. Like if you would be in violation of one of the things that we are voting now.
Yes, yes.
Yourself. And then we may, she gets.
Property maintenance codes are hard, and it's, uh, everybody's got their own personal opinion on what they think is right, and it's. It can be tough to get it done, so if you guys, in fact, you guys got through it and adopted something is actually pretty. Downplay that, I mean, a lot of communities that talk about this stuff don't do anything with it, so.
I know, but they, it was also discussed to have a, uh. I don't know what they call it, I can't remember, like a renters or, uh. Property maintenance for people who rent houses. Yeah. Like right now we have zero, like.
And obviously we have a lot of renters.
Yeah, I, I mean. I think they all were talked about, you know, like that is kind of where the housing. And it is the down.
There is language in here about responsibility of renters as opposed to.
Yeah.
And, and like if you're renting it well, I get, it, it clearly states who's responsible.
Right, right, but we don't have like. Big things for, you know, and, and I think, um. I mean, I think we just, I think we discussed, I don't know. I think it was you guys. Having a little bit. Structure. And, and income, you know, running.
Business, you're generating income, then your property maintenance standard should be higher than residential. If we get doubt that, then I think. Other thing we should probably consider is having our rents be inspected occasionally by someone. Yeah, I mean, every time I lived in other things for, well, most other cities I've lived in. Your rental property is getting inspected.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, just for a bare bone, right at home.
Like anyone can come in and.
Yeah.
Buy a house and rent it.
And renters, right now, according to the survey, if that percentage of the rent company is going to housing, it should at least go to the housing that is. Safe, sound, yeah.
The, the, I, that, I'm actually surprised it wasn't higher. Because the rental, the rents right here is crazy high. Crazy high, like I don't even know if these people are affording it. I'm just like, huh, man, you're, you're renting double my mortgage. So, yeah, I mean, I, I, I. I, I swore to God that it wasn't gonna be able to sustain and they, people were gonna have to come down to their prices, but. We can't keep a rental house if gone like that, I mean, that's what we, that's what we hear in the office. Is places to rent. I mean. Couple times a week, people are looking for rentals, you'll see it on Facebook, you'll see it on all the social media, anybody got any place for rent, you know? And it's like as soon as something's, I mean, we had a house and. One of the worst houses, he come into town, he had fifty people.
Wow.
Have applications to go there, fifty, I was like, oh my gosh, that's crazy.
Think they're making good money on it, they're making great money, there's no reason they can't like pay.
Exactly, especially these older homes. We have one person that has rentals in this town and they're. We have one person that has rentals in this town and they're top notch. And he charges about the same as everybody else, but his houses are nice, they're kept up. He, you know, buys a house, redoes the whole thing and rents them and he, I, most of his renters never leave. I mean, there's one right down the street from me and I think they've been there fifteen years. So, yeah, then there's the other ones that are like, ooh. Unfortunately, they're all in the main drag.
Yeah, that was, there's a rental registration ordinance would would be, uh, you know, how how you can address the inspection portion of it. Talk about the standards that uh, we go into such a property specifically, what would the duties and or are. Uh, I think that's a little bit different than your property maintenance codes, that's that's more of just in general, you know. How do you maintain? Which.
Which they still fall under, right, it's just, yeah. But they took out a lot of things and that's, I think that's where the rental property you could get actually.
So is that, is that something, I mean, we go about that process similar to how we need. When, you know, started the process with property maintenance, was that something we could take a look at a. Unexisting.
Yeah.
Rental registration or.
And you certainly could work on that.
Can we do that, is that something that we could start the process of next meeting?
Yeah, you see that, it certainly gets you a draft to to sort of review and think about, um. Yeah, absolutely.
That's so, yeah, that I didn't put it in there because I wasn't sure how much stuff was going to be covered.
I can be honest, I really thought long there before.
Yeah, I I think the only reason, you know, it was brought up is because some of the housing that needs some work are rentals. And it's kind of like, we don't really have anything to make them do anything, so it's kind of tie their hands and. We're all we're stuck with pulling on.
Yeah, I I based everything out of that survey results. Light housing, blockable community, I mean, these are all things, it really shouldn't be about what. What the community wants, they're saying, so it shouldn't be.
How to enforce, it's going to be another issue.
True.
So, for example, I moved back to Ohio. And I run my house in Victor Township, how are you guys going to know that I'm renting? I moved. You don't, you don't know I'm renting.
That we.
I'm just, no, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Because we know who owns the house and then we know where to go. But we also know who owns your house, I don't know where you, but you live in the city, I know who owns your house by your taxes.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, actually, you know, you're if you're if you're living there as your primary residence, you're likely to play in that that theory. You know, to to get your eighteen exception. Cheaper taxes for you, so.
Right.
You didn't live there.
Found that out, like, holy crap, was it a difference? I'm glad I heard that meeting when Victor Township with.
Or, you know, if you don't buy an LLC, you know, you're not, you're not going to claim. And if you, you could, you could not claim, you could not claim period, and it's a it's a. Enforcement's super important, I'm glad you brought that up, I mean, that ultimately, you know, we talked about property maintenance code. That's a big thing, I I definitely want to make sure we talk with, uh, you know, Dan and, you know, who's. Who's going to enforce the ordinance, make sure that it's something that he feels comfortable with. And then the rental registration ordinance, I I I will say, you know, happy to get you guys a draft, but. Definitely think, uh, recommend you work with legal council to make sure that this is something that they feel, you know. They've got more experience than we do, you know, planners, you know, we we can write a lot of ordinances, you know, specifically for zoning purposes. We can help you with mapping, we can do a lot of stuff for you. That gets a little bit more of that legal territory and a lot of time to work on and handle attorneys.
Does Langsberry have a perm permit inspector? Building inspector, okay, that's probably who would be. On top of the list.
He would, yeah, he would probably handle the rental, and Dan handles all the citations and anything that's.
Probably worth two, you know, understanding that, you know, uh. Your building inspector, you know, I I'm not sure the fee structure you have worked out with him, but he may charge you more to serve doing rental inspections as well. So I think, you know, understanding what that cost is, you know, obviously you can charge for that too, right? Right, but it is important.
Does anybody have any additional questions about the kickoff of the master plan? Well, we appreciate. Letting us spend your ear about unrelated topics and.
That is, that's how you learn too about communities, so it's great.
Yeah, Mike, did you do the seat, the outdoor seating ordinance?
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, okay, um. There's a request to have something removed from that, um. I don't know what that entails, we have to, you have never had any voice added up. So the last sentence in the um, outdoor seating. Ordinance says that you have to have all the same color umbrellas and, um. Well, we've had requests from. The bars, they would like, which right now they have different, we're letting them fly, um. And two dogs, I also would like to have their own umbrellas, um, so I thought I would bring in. Brows and onions must be solid colored and free of advertisement. So that the bars can get those umbrellas for free. And they can pretty much probably get them every year. I don't have any preference, I think they look fine, I didn't write those outdoor seating, I didn't help with that, I wasn't here for that, I don't know.
I can tell you a little bit about that back, if you feel me, just kind of. Yeah, I I know that previously, uh, Paul, Paul, who who was here for a long time, had a very strong preference about. How she wanted some of these aesthetic things to look great, you know, especially downtown. The current concern was, hey, I don't want a bunch of, you know, Miller Lite, you know, uh. Umbrellas out, you know, on Main Street, that's what people are seeing with the go, so, I think that was the intent behind that, um. I mean, that's this, completely your guys' call on that.
Like, uh, two dogs, like, they they had asked, you know, can we have, or they were going to get umbrellas that had dogs. Um, now that we have the social district, like, I think, you know, the social district part, we've kept all of those still red. With the black. Um, and which will probably do, I can't imagine it's not changing that for any reason. So it was really just the box, and whether they can, they're they're a little bit happier. Umbrellas too, um, so I'm just here to. See if that's something.
I don't know, I vote for, if two dogs wants to put dogs under umbrellas, they should, Tulligress has their own logo, they want to put them under under umbrellas, they should. Even if I used to have a small business. And if I want to spend the extra money and have my own umbrellas with my own logo on them, I should be able to. That's my, that's my opinion, I I my opinion, they would have to be approved. Right, they can ask for a variance, right?
Yeah, I mean, I didn't know, we just. Yeah, like right now, that's what they, that's what we're going to do, is ask for that, but to just, we should remove that, because it's just the last sentence of the word. Because then you don't have to ask for.
The bars are getting their. Their things for free. That's save the city money. And, uh. And to me, where it's now a social. So you can carry it, we're up down these roads. So.
We haven't really advertised it much yet, uh, Summer Fest, that's when it's going to be.
But the thing is, you know, I can't believe anybody to be offended to having Miller Lite umbrellas. Carrying beers up and down the road, I just, I think the whole thing should be scratched.
Yeah, that's fine, I mean. So I I would, I would recommend that you guys probably go through and do that formal amendment process, all you have to do is just public notice. Um, let me double check that too, because that was a code ordinance, I think that actually just be done through city council, I don't think you guys really have much to do.
Okay, I wasn't sure if they had to, you know, recommended, because I've never. Anything out, I've always put things in.
Let me, let me double check on that for you, if it's a zoning, if it's a zoning amendment, then it would be a public hearing here, you'd make the recommendation. To city council, city council would adopt it, and then you'd run the notice of newspaper saying what the change was. If it's a, if it's council, there's specific rules that council goes through for abiding charter, so, um. Yeah, that's, I can, I can help you out with that.
Okay. I just kind of wanted to get this, this one, I'm like, I'm not going to go to the town, so if you guys are like, no, we want.
Right, if you get somebody that wants to put umbrellas out in your patio. You know, you should be able to. Not have it a certain color.
I I still think. You want to leave a control in there in case someone. Bars aren't getting along, someone wants to put something out there that's. At least you've got. You know.
That was the.
If it was approved. Like, change the wording from, you know, it has to be this color to approved.
And that's the reason why. I mean. That was part of the reason why we left that in there originally was so that. We didn't run into something where. We had no teeth to say, you can't have that one.
Right.
Which I understand, I understand, you know, the whole. Everything looking.
Making women on an umbrella is not what I want to see, but. But this has two dogs on it, it's got two two. I get what you're saying.
Yeah, so maybe just changing the wording. Or, you know, we have to remove and put something on. All of our rules.
They can, you hear that through my hearing.
They can ask for a variance and.
Yeah.
There hasn't been a lot of times since I've been on this that we've declined. Or 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 at least worked with, worked with that and in and made it. Made it work.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Except for the gravel bed. That was one.
But that that didn't work out to allow me to.
So does that? Does that, that goes up to council, then that's not us, or we're not sure?
I want to double check that, you know, just. And granted, it's been, it's been a few years and I kind of thought that there was a, there's two components to that, I think that there was a reference to it and zoning and then there. There's a, there's a charter, actually, to see how how we wrote it up, I just can't. That's why I was giving you both, you might see it, or it might just be go back to.
I guess we might learn more about that next month.
Yes.
Give you an update regardless of what.
So the city wants to become a. Tree City U F A. Yes, Danell, Danell got a big grant for the park, um, with, uh, how many trees?
Thirty two, thirty five.
So, um, I don't know if you had a chance to read it, but it's basically, it would to, it would be, if we become that, then we can set. Rules and in in maintenance and care for our tree, not, since I've been here, we've got, we've got the consumer grant too. Which, you know, we get that every year. And that's planting on trees and now I think we're getting to the point where we'll start replacing trees, pulling trees out, replacing them. So, um, I think it gives us. You know, an opportunity for grants, they come still trees and stuff like that. And there's a lot of other perks and stuff that you get if you are a. Tree City U F A. So this is just, um. You guys need to recommend it to the city council.
I recommend it. That was a good emotion. Definitely, yeah. Can't hurt. Nays.
None.
And then, um, that the C I P is pretty, um, this is the new. Um, Danell's been working on, um, getting it so it's a little easier to read. So this is her first draft. Of it, um, but still kind of. Speaking it and getting stuff, but, um, we just kind of wanted to, you guys' opinion on. How it's set up and. You know, that you think it's easier to read and if it's. Yeah, not dumbed down, but just more clear, like.
This is great, yeah, this is really nice, um, you can even then reference it in a spreadsheet like.
So, yeah, the next steps we're doing is is the, is the graph, you know, that. Everybody saw, we're going to put it in, in the order it's supposed to be, so you can reference it back and forth. Um, and then, you know, putting another where we schedule, you know, in a, in a graph. Where what we want, projects we want to start with, and how many years and putting it in, so it's all on one page. So those are things we're all working on, so that. By next year's. In January is when we want to do the C I P, um, so we'll start in January, so it's a complete separate thing. That's done and be ready by Monday time, so it'll be completely done and we've got everything in there, I think. We hadn't changed it a lot in the last five years, I think, things just kept moving up and getting done. So now we're at that point where, you know, the next couple of years, I think, we're going to start adding things to it, things we want to, and I think the master plan is going to help. With that, because it's going to get you focused on what you want, and then those are things that we can put on. So we'll have a nice updated C I P and a nice updated master plan all in the same year. Well, this was just, um, well, what, Danell's been working on this, she's a lot of time in the business, wanted to, you guys to see it, uh. Recognize what, what it will be looking like. And as we get, you know, more into it and more, you know, the the graphs and stuff like that, I'll bring them for you guys to look at.
Name other items. Business.
I went from nothing to now we got all kinds of stuff.
All right. Where you live at? Uh, you know where Angus is, is the old brick house on.